Meet the following authorities. Dr. Ross, here.
Here.
Dr. Ross, here. And square, here. Today. Here. All of you present, Dr. Ross and John, please.
Uh, Mr. West, members of the board. Uh, with your permission, we would like to move 8.5, 5.8 because Coach Boyd is in the playoff and he's trying to get back to practice today. But we can, uh, if you'd like, we can do that.
You called him, Mr. West. We can, uh, one of those people.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But you say 8.5, so maybe it be, uh, 5.8. Okay. Seven point eight?
Seven.
That's an accident. Right. It's an accident.
No, he wanted to put it in the same. I want to, I want to make, we can maybe be, uh, present, and we can act on it. You can't for acting out.
Okay. Wait a minute. Eight point five. Who did you consent out of, right? You said seven point eight.
Now, I want to, again, 8.5, move it up to 5.8.
Oh, that's a question.
Oh, 5.8.
Right. And then we kind of go to, we can just leave where it is and hold on, pick after me.
Okay. We had to make it to where like 5.6, we were going to go back up right in the day. After 5.5. Then we get 5. Make it 5.6. Okay? Okay. All right? Anything else need to be changed or not? Can we give the motion to Dr. Ross and John?
Mr. Chair, I move it off the agenda as a mandate.
They will accept it all in favor. Aye, aye, pass with 5.0. Uh, out of number four, vote to come in.
None.
None. Say. Number five, our recognition is 5.1. School Board Recognition Week. Bush.
This is, uh, school board that needs to win. And we would like to say thank you to all of you who served here today. And I think that the public needs to know this because oftentimes we think that political office pays a lot of money, right? But that's not the, that's not the case. These folks serve every month and sometimes we have two meetings, sometimes three meetings a month. And their salary is $200.
$200 a month, $50.
$200 a week. $50 a week, okay? When I was chopping cotton back in 67, 68, you know, that was, I would make about $80, $20 a week. So I, there were two weeks worth. But whenever we call them, they're always here. And for the most part, they will always try to find a way to work out a problem. And that's the good part about any organization. You will have problems from time to time, but as far as those good organizations, everybody put their ideas together and come up with a solution that's going to be best for the organization. Now, in this case, we look at all of our schools, all of our staff members as the organization because that's what we all about, is all, is the organization. So we want to take this time to thank each of you for your time and, uh, the effort you put into, uh, to make the contribution to the next level of school district, especially for our faculty, students, and our parents because of the fact that it takes a whole village to raise a child, let me say. And I often say, beyond the difference between a good school system and a social school system, first of all, you got to have good parents who are working, motivated, good teachers, and the board members who understand both the parent side, the student side, and the administration side. So we have been blessed to have that. I've been working with the board now for six years and about, about three months. Mr. Bush.
Hey, Mr. Bush, Mr. James, and members of the board. Uh, what you talk about chopping cotton, I don't know his name right there. What? On behalf of the Brayden Administration District, we would like to present you all with these tokens of appreciation. And these nice free bags. At this time, the principals from, uh, each school will come in their home. All right, come on, come on.
You can sit down, can't you? Sitting there with the best.
Good afternoon, this is President James, members of the board. We really appreciate you for being so to be with and beneficial to the faculty and staff. Thank you.
Two thousand dollars. I'm just joking, it's a frenzy. I was just joking.
Good afternoon, this is President, members of the board. Remedy Warren Elementary, we wanted to show how much we appreciate you. A little coconut, a little bit of Remedy Warren, and my plate of blue. Good afternoon, uh, President James, and other members of the board. On behalf of the students and staff of Warren Town Elementary, this is not compared to that hefty $200 a month you get, but we would like to show our appreciation to you all. Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the faculty and staff at the Natchez Middle School, we would like to thank you for all your sacrifice, for what you do for the students and staff for our district. Happy school board appreciation.
Need everyone. On behalf of Natchez High School, Natchez Early College, and Fallon as well, we will send you gifts in the boardroom if you missed that. We're so happy that we didn't have enough. I want to say, I want to reiterate, everyone, how, uh, thankful we are for everything that you have done to do for us, for the children and community in the Natchez Level School District as a whole. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
One, I just, I didn't know. I'm going to be a king of wars.
Also, uh, to build the board, we want to, uh, acknowledge Superintendent Secretary and your secretary for, uh, the banner and setting up our story.
All right, thank you. I want to thank you all for the gift. Thank, thank everyone for all of us. Five point two, Natchez students.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald-Green. At this time, I would like to recognize one of our Natchez Early College seniors. She is one of four students in the state of Mississippi that has been chosen to represent, uh, Congressional District Number Two, um, for their essay and speaking contest, the Mississippi School Board Association Speaking and Essay Contest. And she was, is the recipient of the $1,000 award, and she will read her essay at the Mississippi School Board's annual conference in Jackson on next Tuesday. That is Ms. Deara Dampy. At this time, I would also like to recognize a student who has done exceptionally well on the ACT, um, her 10th grade year. We know the importance of the ACT. We know that that's where the money is when it comes to schools and scholarships. And this student is a 10th grade student, and her very first time taking the ACT, she scored a 29 composite. And 97% tie in the state of Mississippi when it comes to her composite score, and she even made a 34 in the reading sub category. And this student is Ms. Angelica King. I'll make sure that she gets her certificate. Thanks, you all.
Turn it back, turn it back, take four of these, okay?
After we, we would like to hear a repeat.
Okay, that is not you. Somebody. Mr. Jackson? Five point four. Mr. France?
Mr. Francis.
Mr. France.
Francis.
So for Natchez High School, uh, this certificate is presented to our student in special recognition for her honorable mention in the 2022 Promote the Vote Essay Contest for her essay on Y Vote. And so we're here today to recognize Ms. Selena Collins.
You like this presentation, please?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, yes, sir. Just because I'm the oldest person, I need, uh, recognition, probably. Yeah, let me get a good photo. You can photo shop if you need.
Okay. Let me have Mr. Mark Francis.
Good afternoon, James, members of the board, Butcher, Ms. McDonald-Green. Today, we have, look at this, uh, Mr. Mark Francis, who works very closely with us at Fallon. He does the artist and, uh, residency training, teaching students how to do wonderful photography. Uh, a young lady, I was just recognizing one of her, one of his students. Ms. Green is our digital media teacher. They worked closely together during the year on teaching students how the fine arts of photography, some lessons for Francis and Ms. Green.
Very briefly, uh, we took the, uh, students in the Digital Media Technology Program around matches to create a photo exhibit called My Matches. In the process, besides photographing the elements that you see here and the places, they learn about the places. So it was a dual purpose, actually, three purposes, not just to get them out of the class, but to learn about their own community and to portray their own community in a way they may never have without being in that program and experiencing the art of photography and the art of editing their own images. So we're very proud of it. This exhibit will travel around the community and stay at various places so the Natchez folks, the area folks, can see what a good job these students have done and what good work is being done at Fallon. Thank you.
These kids rock.
Mr. James, members of the board, it's great to be a Bulldog.
Amen.
And you see that the auditorium is full today. Want to thank you all for not putting O212 on disturb, answering the call, and getting those invitations that you received at school because we are going to recognize some very, very special students today. Uh, they are a big reason as to why the Natchez Level School District is a B-rated school district. And it's a testament to them and their hard work, their parents, their teachers, administrators, and everybody involved. We want all of our students to be proficient. That's what we strive for. But the students here in this room that's before you, they score advanced on the math test. So y'all, we going to call every last one of them. All right, well, Natchez Early College, uh, she was called earlier, she's not here, but Angelica King, advanced in Algebra I and Biology I. Kristen Barrett, Natchez Early College, advanced in ELA, Math and Science. Mason Bowden, Math. Noah Scott, Math. There's no. Aleah Hogan, Science. Kahari McNeil, Science. Katie Simmons, Math and Science. Randall Newell, ELA and Science. Justin Callahan, Science. Journey Cook, Science. Tierney Timmons, Science. Megan Corcoran, Science. Braylon Turner, Math and Science. Jasmine Ortiz, Math and Science. Darrell Crane, ELA. Jaden Boyd, ELA. Jada Jackson, ELA. Michael Murray, US History. Nala Jones, US History. Gerald Monroe, US History. Tyrell Bacon, US History. Maya Hoggatt, US History. Sierra Demby, US History. Evan Barnes, US History. Ruth Wesley, US History. Antonio Fionne, US History. Caitlin Richardson, US History. Ganaya Fells, English II. Naya Jackson, English II. Angela Jackson, English II. There we go. Emmanuel Horton, English II. Kevon Blanton, English II. Jaden McGee, English II. Braylon Round, English II. Troy Jones, English II. Tamia Green, English II. David Landry, English II. Timothy Carpen, Carpenter, English II. Jordan Roland, English II. Patrick Seals, English II. Hadarablaena, English II. Tabia Morris, English II. Samantha Reed, English II. Armani Gutter, English II. Jaden Hutchins, Biology I. Gabriel Remy, Biology I. Joshua Poole, Biology I. Anaya Washington. Anaya Washington, Algebra I and Biology I. Morgan McGee, Algebra I and Biology I. Peyton Bell, Algebra I. Adrian Harris, Algebra I and Biology I. Remember those all advanced students. All right. Jackson, if you would, please, to say those those students, Natchez Early College, that school. West Elementary, Lucas Simmons, ELA and Math. Lexi Borges, ELA and Math. Serenity Patton, ELA and Math. Kanala Smith, ELA. Alyssa Kraft, ELA. Caitlin Mercer, Math. Josiah Simmons, Math. Joseph Perry, Math. Rockets and Bull, Jack. Alex Davis, Math. Jelaja Felton, Math. Leila Wesley, Math. Laria Johnson, ELA. Adrian Knox, ELA and Math. Armani Ward, ELA. Jayla Meredith. Michael Jackson, E.L.A. Mary Moore, E.L.A. Eugene May, E.L.A. Marley Lynn Gillian, E.L.A. Jessica Hawkins, E.L.A. Marissa Nelson, E.L.A. Selena Bill, E.L.A. Turn the phone off for me. Cora Allen, E.L.A. Mason McDaniel, E.L.A. Rayland Shannon, E.L.A. Casey Campbell, E.L.A. Kanaya Simpson, E.L.A. Eliseal Fuller, E.L.A. Yumaria August, E.L.A. and Math. Yumari Butler, Math. Leon Evans, E.L.A. and Math. Kentrell Clark, E.L.A. and Math. Jelila Evans, E.L.A. and Math. Jinx Evans. Kayden Willis, E.L.A. and Math. Tristan Floyd, Math. Natus High School, Jayla Pilcher, Algebra One and Biology One. James Dennis, Natus High, uh, English Two. Amira O'Neil, U.S. History. Tyrone Davis, U.S. History. Astrid Williams, U.S. History. Spencer Spencer, U.S. History. De'ajah Ward, U.S. History. Jamarian Myers, U.S. History. Tyrone Meredith. Antoine Liddell, U.S. History. Mackia Johnson, U.S. History. Nathan Harris, U.S. History. St. Joanna Douglas, U.S. History. Gabrielle Davis, U.S. History. Nathan Brock, U.S. History. William Johnson, U.S. History. Taharain Anderson, U.S. History. Avery Weedah, Biology One. Jeremiah Parker, Biology One. Rebecca Brock, Biology One. De'ara Franklin, English Two. Takari Dos, English Two. Last one. All right, McLaurin. All right, these students are McLaurin now by the way of Natus Middle School. Aiden Warner, Science. Adrian Miles, Science. Renee Leah, Science. Amara Kay, Science. Aiden Green, Science. Avery Rhodes, Math and Science. Green Mujali, Math and Science. Anna Stewart, E.L.A. and Science. Kingston Smith, E.L.A. and Science. Chance Nails, E. Chase, Ch- Chase Nails. Is Chase out?
Chase, Chase.
Okay. Chase Nails, E.L.A. and Science. Adrian Jones, E.L.A. and Science. Kayden Henderson, E.L.A. and Science. Peyton Bradford, E.L.A. Kobe Harris, E.L.A. Math and Science. Jael Alexander, E.L.A. Math and Science. Christopher Caldwell, Math. Avery Thomas, E.L.A. and Math. Yumari Thomas, E.L.A. and Math. Megan Johnson, E.L.A. and Math. Kevin Heinz, E.L.A. and Math. Kimmy Davis, E.L.A. and Math. Destiny Watson, E.L.A. Hope Miller, Math. Kristen Sibley, E.L.A. Tia Green, E.L.A. as Math. Jeremiah Bell, Math. Alaja Bell, Alaja Bell, Math. Caitlin Gibbons, Math. Tyrington Robinson, Math. Jelirian Johnson, Math. Way be patient with them. Price West, Math. Craig Shelby, E.L.A. Cameron Sterben, E.L.A. David Probie, E.L.A. and Math. And last but not least, Paris Sim. Der Anis Erbach. How are you? No sir, that's just the. In the hole.
Oh, what you mean, wait, wait. I'll go back into regular order.
Right. Second. Okay, it's been moved and set in all its phases. They're bad, just five zero. All right. Five point six. We, uh, presentation by Coach Moore. Coach Moore, you see it move up really. So you get to practice, right?
Yes, sir.
They say that you were in the playoff. Congratulations for the playoff, huh? You pull it out at the last moment.
Oh, congratulations.
Do it that. Thank you Coach Moore, congratulations to you and to your team, same thing from the board.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald-Green, um, President James, and members of the board. I'm coming to you today for a presentation, uh, at Lateshaw. But before I get started, I have Dr. Murray, who is online, and he will be providing a little bit of an update of where we are with our progress with the end. Dr. Murray?
At Middle School, uh, construction, at their own. First thing I want to do is just simply say that we found an opportunity and maybe fortunate that days. And that just after the school district, mentally, like I'm 25 years old, so I really appreciate that. What I want to do really fast is kind of go over them.
Can you, can you bag off the mic a little bit?
I'm sorry, is that?
Top there.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Can you stop, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Guys see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, this is just a summary of work report of the first 10 days. Uh, initial activities, we got Mr. McCausker discussing PDB plan. Uh, Mr. McCausker about, uh, staff issues and concerns. Mr. McCausker talking about the vision. Mr. McCowles talking about the vision for the program, he has concerns where they are. We did an, we did initial walkthrough, look, go there material, assess supplies and educational material that we needed. Then we, uh, he introduced me to his class and I talked about my role, what I'm gonna be doing. In return, the students introduced themselves. I asked them if they played instruments. Were they interested? I talked about the benefits of being a band. So then we started, then we started just playing instruments, um. Mr. McCowles, and I was talking about the, the, uh, tentative dance showcase that's being planned as well. They're gonna smoke up based on that. Uh, we introduced the student to basic rule of music, staff, lines and spaces. Uh, the rabble said with Mr. McCowles, chips, chips, and everything. And the first ten days I was meeting with, uh, Bill, Professor Miss Mills. And I've interviewed more, and I think I had a conversation impacting with the high school principal. Uh, as a result, as a result of the first ten days, the majority of the students showed interest, interest in playing instruments. But also do not, if everybody not come on to, they're gonna just be given, uh, assignments. For state testing, English language, arts history, et cetera. Uh, the one that they're interested, they perform the basic fundamental reading music, clap and down. Uh, work with the high school band, we're gonna work on band fundamentals, sight reading, et cetera. Uh, identify those senior high school students, go start working with them on scholarship audition. One important thing is, uh, came up was the auxiliary person, they have the flags and dancing girls. So Mr. McCowles worked on that, uh, job description. Uh, he's still working on inventory, some of the things we need to get rid of, some of they go move down to the elementary school. And he goes to get requisition for supplies and teaching materials. Uh, with our new students, we didn't work for mouthpieces, put more instruments, again, preparing a sign of number hand. And just continue to evaluate students on, on instruments. Throughout the week, we just been basically putting on instruments, finding who can do, who can't. And just getting to go over most importantly, uh, preparing of twelfth graders for a scholarship audition. And we just basically been dealing with preparing for graduation, tough and circumstance, all sorts of things. Uh, but for his comments, some very exceptional attempting students, a lot of potential. More students are getting, they getting engaged, but some concerns are getting those teaching materials and supplies in. I'm using some of my stuff I have, books and things that I need. Uh, one issue that we really look at is that band booster organization. We're gonna look at that and redefine what and how they do things, I think they do a good job. But in terms of efficiency, institutional control and protocols, we're gonna do a little treatment with that. And we continue to, uh, work on the field, like one of the band room, get stuff out of there, moving things around. And, uh, basically just get that learning out there in place. And if you have any questions for me, you have my ears.
Do you have any questions that I can learn?
I just think that in this short period of time, uh, he is doing amazing from what I heard and what I've seen, especially from parent comments, so. Thank you all for getting us back on track, because you know, we've always had a good band.
Absolutely.
We've always had, and we've always had scholarship availabilities for these, for students out of this area. So let's bring the band back, thank you.
And so that everyone will know, a lot of things that we're doing now, and I, I tell this every time we talk. A lot of things that we're doing should have been done around August, September. But we're gonna, we're gonna put them in definitely fast track. And just like Mr. Butcher said, if the horn in the district buy, we need to put a horn in the student's hand. So that's, that's, that's the end that. We're gonna make sure we use all our resources to do what we can to provide the best musical, academic and social experience for our student resister.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, just quickly to piggyback off what Dr. Murray said, um, he's doing a really great job over there, he and, um, Mr. McCowles. They have hit the ground running a couple days, I came in just saying throughout the day to see what was going on. And the goal from the beginning was major recruitment and retention. And like Dr. Murray said, one major goal is to have child, every horn that we have available. So when we took a big hit during COVID, where we dropped down from maybe sixty, seventy kids to twenty, fifteen kids. We are already bringing those numbers back up, and right now I think we're looking at close to fifty. And getting ready to get over the edge, those kids instantly come in, they've instantly been brought in, um, recruited, they're excited. They're getting ready to be placed on their horns and I think that Dr. Murray and Mr. McCowles are doing a really good job of bringing that excitement back about the band. And, and they're teaching structure, structure from fundamentals, all the way from bottom to top, so that's been really, really important.
How's the circumstances?
What, what, what three songs you say every band's supposed to be to play?
Seven.
What three songs you say every band's supposed to be to play?
They have to play these, the stock standard. The school support. And public circumstance. If, if, if they're supposed to three songs, you, 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 you got the mission going on. And they had those songs for off of us. So those are some of the things we're working with the high school band on. But I can see, uh, we are to the ground running, we're gonna definitely need some type of more something, so, uh, I just wanna put it on the horizon. There'd be some type of band enrichment program, because you can't make up for lost time. Because, uh, I can, I can guarantee you those kids are really working hard. There are a few items that you guys ordered that, that are on the way, but as soon as those instruments come in. We're gonna put a horn in everywhere in body that wants to participate, so that's the end that.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Everyone in front of you, you have, um. Forms in a packet discussing and reviewing professional development for the athletic department, proposed professional development. The goal is to bring professional development to the. The goal is to bring, um, professional development to our coaches and staff that is more geared specifically to our needs and our district and our students. Um, if you can't find it, it looks like it's right in front of you. And as you see through view of the schedule, there's two days and they are during interstation in March twenty-second and March twenty-third. On the first day, we have inspiration and motivation by Kendall Lumpens and his information is listed in the packet as well. He has spoken at quite a few events throughout the state, year tours, athletics and FCA. Some of those places he's spoken is Prairie Community College, Bogey Chills, uh, high school, University of Southern West, Jones County Junior College, Longmont tenth high school, Jersey Vegas County High School and Hattiesburg Public Schools. Throughout the day, coaches are gonna be set up in different stations that are geared towards learning coaches community. All coaches will attend that session, um, that relates to inspiration and motivation. After that, all the coaches will attend the station with Mr. Donovan Smith geared towards academic eligibility. To discuss the academics for our students, the requirements that they need going into college and not just starting them when they're in eleventh and twelfth grade, when they're eligible to receive scholarships and talk to coaches. They actually start it from the ninth grade all the way up their ACT scores and eligibility and what is needed for them to attend the schools of their choice. The next session after that is ten AM, building a strong foundation, and I asked Coach Reed to come back and speak to our coaching staff about how to build a strong foundation and wants to bring someone that is from this community, that knows our kids and knows the community. To discuss what we can do to build a foundation, not only for one of our sports, but all of our sports and build school culture as a whole. Um, during that time with those head coaches, assistant coaches will also be in, uh, be in professional development as well. Discussing how to assist your head coach in building that foundation, because we know that the lead person cannot do it alone. While those sessions are going on, our choral and general music will be having their own session to discuss their needs with Dr. Murray and our other consultant, Mr. McCollum. At eleven AM, we will have Ms. Luan Ware from Auburn State University to come and speak to our minor sports about sponsorships and diversity. And how to expand our minor sports like softball, soccer, and how to get more attendance at those games, how to bring more excitement so that we can get more kids involved in those sports. While that is happening with minor sports, our major sports will be meeting with a speaker that I have not selected yet, uh, to discuss exposure, recruitment, how to have better exposure for our kids. How to get better recruitment, because we have really good athletes, not only are they athletes, they're academic athletes, they're academic, uh, scholar athletes. And we need to do a better job of exposing them to the better opportunities that are out there. From that session, lunch will be provided by BSN. And going from there, we'll talk about, uh, paperwork and process with Mr. Kita Davis and Ms. Keanu Morris. Followed by the expectations by the athletic department of Natchez Academy School District. So that is the first day. On the second day, uh, we'll have Mr. Melvin Davis to come in and talk about student safety with all of our coaches and how we can provide a safe environment for them when we're traveling, when we're at practice, when we're on campus. Followed by practice planning, because it's something that all coaches need to know. And we're not saying that our coaches aren't doing that, but there's always a better way to get better each day. And that'll be with Mr. James Lewis, he is the athletic director of Big Bird, uh, school district. Followed by continued, uh, professional development with our choral and general music with Mr. McCollum and Dr. Murray. From there, we'll have a break. Then we'll go into the major thing, which is Dragonfly, which I'll be speaking on, which is our eligibility for our students to be able to participate with them in Mississippi High School Association, rules and regulations. Lunch provided by BSN and a panel discussion where our coaches will get down and just be able to sit down and discuss issues that they may have or ideas that they might wanna bring forward. For us to apply to make just athletics as a whole, I think, and A S D better for all of our students. And on that panel, we will have Coach Reed, Ms. Ware and Mr. Lewis from Big Bird High School. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Is that you, Ms. Warren?
It's you.
We want to thank Coach Moore, that, uh, she had planned to have a workshop early on where it could conflict with something else and right now when we are out for intersection. Just like the students would have an intersection, the coaches would have intersection too at that particular time, so we just need to.
How many participants?
Um, we have our board of forty-five coaches. And they'll be divided into sessions that are geared directly toward their needs, so, uh, head coaches, assistant coaches, minor sports, major sports, and in arts.
Yeah, so this is y'all, your real stakeholders discussion. Sounds good. Do we need an approv, do we need to approve this?
Yes.
Thank you, Coach Moore.
Thank you, Coach, thank y'all.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, but I'm here to practice right now, but if y'all like to come sit down, if you head down to Law on Friday, bring your pom poms and get ready to get as loud as you can.
She's playing her home team.
That's my alma mater. Most definitely.
Uh, wow, Mr. Burison with loving, uh, superintendent honor roll scholars. You wanna thank the Natchez Academy School District, uh, Arts Department for preparing students for scholarships, really appreciate that and letting them know that they are doing a great job, it's easy on my pockets, that's for, for sure. Uh, also, uh, for school board recognition week, I want y'all to know that, uh, Governor Reeves and, uh, Cecile Lazon, Lazono. Um, the MSBA president, they both presented proclamations, uh, for school board recognition week that Mr. Davis will spread across the minutes. You think you wanna hear all of the way I ask? And, uh, they also sent, uh, certificates, uh, to each of them. This is from the Mississippi School Board Association. I do wanna thank my entire department for everything today. Alright. For the second nine weeks, our superintendent scholars, uh, from McLaurin Elementary School, they are on the screen, let's give them a man. Superintendent Scholars from Morgantown Elementary School. West Elementary School Superintendent Scholars. Natchez Middle School Superintendent Scholars. Natchez High School Superintendent Scholars. National Early College at Colleen Superintendent Scholars. Okay, second nine weeks honor roll total, so we have a total of two hundred and two superintendent scholars and five hundred and seventy-eight principal scholars. So with everything that you've seen, that you see that we have, uh, great students in the Natchez Academy School District. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Inspector, thank you, Mr. Fields and his, uh, five movement department for all the hard work that they put in.
Oh, you have five? Five.
She's five.
She's number five.
Okay. And next we have, uh, Ms. Mills.
Good evening again, President James, Mr. Butcher, and members of the board. Uh, we are here, uh, Ms. Dunbar and I, to present the data for the Natchez Middle School. As y'all know, we are rated an ATS I school, that's an additional term that supports school improvement. Um, and we are given that identification due to our level of growth with a special subset of students, and that particular subset is students with disabilities. Uh, just very briefly, the state cutoff score was two sixty and we earned two thirty-two. So we remain there for that school and it inherited from boarding path. Uh, so that's why we have this, so we are working hard to remove that label, moving it to twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, so each month you'll see us standing before you and just kinda give you an update on where we are and how we're progressing towards our goals. So if you look at the document, I think you have a copy of it, uh, you see where our overall school goal is, I'm not gonna read that because we talked about that last month. You see what we did for the first benchmark, but I do wanna draw your attention to what we did for the second benchmark. So as you can see right now, proficiency, we're looking at fifteen percent reading. Eighteen percent for math and twenty-seven, twenty-six percent for science biology. I wanna say this, we are at the mid-point and as you can see, we're roughly fifty percent or more at our goal, or a little under for science. However, we are, we're the mid-point of the school year and we're the mid-point of our goal, so I feel good about where we're gonna end up. Uh, percent growth all, currently we're at twenty-seven percent for reading, twenty-four percent for math. So when it comes to growth all, we gotta do a little bit more pushing in our math growth all. However, when you look at our percent growth for our bottom twenty-five, we're at thirty-one percent for reading, but we have exceeded our goal already for math, we're at seventy-eight percent. And our goal was seventy percent, so that's one category we have already exceeded the goal, so we feel real good about where we're headed. If you look at the other pages, it just kinda tells you briefly what we are doing to kinda make sure we're putting the work in to reach those goals. One thing is we've identified all the standards that students did not do as well on. Uh, we're meeting with our teachers every week and what we're doing is we're looking at those questions. A lot of times it's not about what the kid does not notice, it's about how the questions are being asked or the misconceptions that exist with those choices. So just kinda talking through, how can we help students kinda model the thinking of what they should be doing when they're asking in front of those test questions? So we do that every week, um, teachers do two weeks of intervention, then at the end of the two weeks, they reassess the kids. And we're proud to say that our data points on our progress, monitoring assessments are higher than our baseline, so we feel good about where we're headed. Any questions?
But these numbers look good.
We feel good about where they're headed, so, but we're putting a lot of work in, we can still have no wasted up.
I agree with Ms. Mills, um, putting in a mark, um.
I agree with Ms. Mills. Putting in more, just have some tests we have to consume as part of. So Ms. Jones, are you a part of this chronic actions?
Yes, ma'am.
What more can we do to try to get the parents to send students to?
It's hard, Mr. Davis and I have to suit up. We go through windows and all trying to reach a parent.
Because I always think above fifteen percent is, that's a lot. Twenty-six percent, that's a lot.
Especially probably send out some statistics, send some statistics out, pre-COVID, post-COVID. And we just are not even able to get back on track post-COVID at this point. The percent, we have almost about twenty-nine percent more absentee now before we had prior to COVID. And we just have, if they're not here, it's a problem state. Yeah, they're supposed to have like a round table discussion what the whole state has been trying to cut out on absentee.
Yeah, I mean, I actually see students walk past the bus. So you know, you know they're not going, I guess their parents think that they've gotten dressed to go to class, go to school here every day, every day. And they walk down the street like they're going to catch the bus, go to the side, wait for the bus to leave, and then go wherever they go.
And she doesn't want to have to be working parents too, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Sometimes we say, no, the case not paid, they're under pressure to challenge the student school.
I believe that.
Even we called them, you know, five seventy today, we called them. They think they can't leave.
So do the experts think that it's just some psychological thing of COVID where everything was just different? And do the children think staying at home was something okay? And absent not showing up is okay? And what's happening psychologically when you talk to these students? Apathy? Just general apathy or?
I think somewhere along the line prior to after COVID. I think we got a lack. We just haven't geared back up always. Now, you know, the statistics show that we have a few more students right now who are having some emotional issues than we had prior to COVID also. So, you know, somebody might be correct and somebody might not. You know, everything that happened has not worked. Now, we say COVID related, you know? But it is an issue because right before COVID, we had just got our absentee back where we needed to be. You know, and then when COVID hit, you know, it's kind of like.
But employers are saying the same thing, right? Employees are saying it's harder to get people to come back to work. So, you know, the students are part of that, that sort of malaise that is still with us.
Yeah, I think it's a part of, I think it's part of the psychological, what it got used to have. With COVID, not being at school or not doing certain ones did. And so it's hard to get them back to that pattern where they were going prior to, I think.
Do you have any insights into that?
I agree with Mr. Butcher. Also, you go to different stores, department stores or food stores, you'll see people wanting it in windows where people just don't want to come to work. We have to keep hitting the ground, expressing the importance of school. I stress the other side of jail fines and that type of thing. And that does make a difference with certain, with different parents. Mr. Butcher, one thing too, you might want to add that. In the chronic absentee report that M D sent out, it does also include suspension as well as excuse absence. And so Melvin Davis may have twenty suspension, and it's going to show us if he has those many unexcused absence, when really he's not missed one day. It's just that suspension as well as their medical excuses also go into that calculation.
And I want to bring, what you all look at this, want to bring your attention to this. If you look at our normal physical referrals at seventy-seven, that's actually the highest we've had all year. We normally have been having around sixty, and that's pretty, I would say that's decent. When you look at it, a roll of six hundred and twenty-plus kids, you're looking at right over ten percent. And so some of that is part of that twenty-six percent that you see as well.
And we are fortunate because we have Ms. Jones who's helping, probably Mr. Davis. You know, they partnered together. Our president, the guidance council making calls, McDonald and I making calls. And we also, you know, the really, really more challenging case, do we call in the social work? And they actually go and knock on doors and all those kind of things. So.
But let us know, Mr. Butcher, if there is a discussion, a dialogue that can explain some of this. You know, I would be interested in knowing what's going on, if this is a larger trend and why.
We just stay here around table, you know, we can all learn something from that.
Well, I, you know, I, you know, we.
Nationwide.
Nationwide, right. Exactly. I've heard the statistics and they're not good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, item number six, approval of the minutes. Approval of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes, and approval of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three board work session minutes. Can I get approval?
I move for approval on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes, and approval on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, board work session minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been motion accepted or in favor? Okay, approval of anything in the consent item at this time, would you like to move to action item? If not, can I get approval?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve all consent items, seven point one through seven point seven.
Okay, it's been moved and accepted to approve all consent items. All in favor? I pass the five zero. Okay, item number eight, approval action item, eight point one.
Good evening, Mr. James and members of the board. On behalf of the Office of Human Resources, we wish you a happy school board recognition week, and we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
With that being said, in front of you is the personnel board report eight point one and personnel vacancy list eight one one eight. It is a recommendation of the superintendent that the board of trustees approve the attached personnel changes and documents.
So move. Seven.
It's been moved and accepted or in favor? I pass the five zero. Eight point two.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, deputy superintendent. We have before you, item eight point two, the approval of the claims reports and the acceptance of the financial reports. Within this section, you will find the claims documents dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and the financial report for January twenty twenty-three. There are also couple of projects some recently. If there are questions, I'll gladly entertain those. If there aren't, it is recommended that the board of trustees approve the aforementioned claims documents and the five required financial reports as presented for review.
So move. Seven.
Very good move. To approve eight point two, accepted or in favor? I pass the five zero, eight point three.
Well, I know, after we use twenty-five of one of the bid process, a bid process with four thousand one hundred and forty dollars, I actually want to approve and accept your new file of bids while circuit to circuit. I mean, I believe the bidding and circuit RFP. Do you have any question?
Any question?
What's, we accept the bid or we accept that?
No, we accept.
Except with your new file of one of the bid project of the price was four thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
So that was the lowest bid of the time. Okay.
Yeah, that was the lowest bid.
Right there, you got one for seven thousand six hundred.
Oh, okay.
That's an AT&T.
Okay.
That was AT&T.
Okay.
Once, once it already came saying that the price is going to be three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cent, I'm right.
Okay. How often motion we accept, lowest and best bid?
It's been moved and accepted or in favor? I pass the five zero.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Eight point four.
Good evening, board, Mr. Butcher and Ms. McDonald. Eight point four, approved to remove McGowan Elementary Pre-K tuition fee. I have some background information for you. Natchez County School District currently houses one Pre-K three class, one Pre-K four class at McGowan Elementary. There are currently twenty-seven students enrolled in the Pre-K program, eighteen on general ed, and none of those students are exceptional ed. With the exception of exceptional ed students, general education students are currently paying a monthly fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. Just recently, November of twenty twenty-two, Natchez County School District has been awarded a Pre-K SIP grant for six hundred thousand dollars for two additional four-year classes, for two four-year classes. So therefore, we are requesting removal of tuition fee from McGowan's current Pre-K program.
So. So you want to use that, I'm sorry, or you want to use that money to pay the tuition?
For one of the, yes, for one class in McGowan. And then we will have an additional program at WIS.
How many additional students are we looking at?
Um, McGowan, there are fourteen, but with the grants, it's twenty, up to twenty per class.
So we hope that we can pick up twenty per class. But as you know, we'll be, we'll be competition with the, you know, the.
So the ones that are already in Pre-K, who's paying there?
In Pre-K now, parents. It's just, they pay for the general ed students. In Pre-Ks, the exceptional ed students pay about exceptional ed required. So this grant would help us to remove the fee and then make the fee altogether.
All the costs.
Yes, but.
Could this be a recurring grant?
More likely, more likely. They're, they're really running two, early collaborative grant and a Pre-K grant.
And the grant was to pay for tuition.
Yes, it'll take care of everything.
Do, do anything we want with that, that grant?
It's for, no, the grant, the Pre-K grant? No, it's for, it's for, it'll take care of supplies, it'll take care of salaries, benefits, all of that.
But it was given to us to, to, to move this mission forward, right? And we think the best way to do it is to pay this tuition because we'll give more students, yeah.
Yes.
And one more question. So will lunch be added to this federal school district? Well, we don't pay for lunch anymore, do we? Okay, disregard.
I mean, kids were paying two fifty, our parents were paying two fifty.
They're nine.
Nine?
No, eighteen, I'm sorry, eighteen, currently eighteen.
And they've been paying us that old view, two fifty per month?
Per month.
Would they be pre-birth?
No, because this will not start now until next year. Yes, we will not start the new Pre-K classes until next year.
But this will be a big boon to those parents, but it also is going to attract a lot more students.
Yes, ma'am.
You can look at numbers up.
Right, the three-year-olds that are currently enrolled, that will be going into the four-year-old class, they're going to have to pay next year.
So it'll be the applications.
Yes, they're going to use the same process.
And then we promote it.
Yes, yes, ma'am. As soon as y'all think we can move forward.
Well, she, she.
So.
Moving seven dollars favor?
Right, fantastic. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Eight point five, that's what, that's what we vote to, we got to vote on.
I believe that we approve the professional development for the athletic department as presented.
Okay, move another bunch of, second item, Mr. Ware, all in favor?
Angela Allen, thanks, because I'm on it.
I think you have to abstain unless you're getting paid.
No, I'm not getting paid, but I'm still on the panel.
You can abstain.
You can abstain. Okay. I just abstained. Just because I want to abstain. I just, I never abstained, I was abstaining. Do you abstain or do you?
We got one, one thing.
Abstain.
We're just put out.
Don't put me out.
Okay, there you go. You got it, Miss Davis? Okay. Four point, eight point six.
Good eve, good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, and Mrs. McDonald. Before you is an opportunity that the Natchez County School District has to make application for an energy prize. It is not a grant, it is a prize in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. It is a part of the Biden Administration's allocation of four point five million dollars to LEAs. LEAs have the opportunity to utilize these funds, again, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, to help train staff on energy efficient measures. At the end of this one-year application period or prize period, the district then has an opportunity to apply for an additional fifty thousand dollars in prize money. The monies will be sent to the district, and the district will, having fine tuned its plan, work with leading industries to train our staff on those specific measures that can be taken to increase everything from them knowing how to do energy measures, turning out lights, installing lights. It's just in a way, a plethora of training that our staff will go through. And it will be done by leaders in the energy industry. The goal of it is to help our staff understand how to improve air quality and work with our brand manager in seeking other opportunities to help us renovate our building with a focus on a previously written application where we are also seeking funds for replacing lights and doors in our three elementary schools and our other site over on George F. F. West Boulevard. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board of trustees support this endeavor that permits the Natchez County School District to submit an application for the energy class prize in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for phase one. And if we are, are selected by the Department of Energy, an additional fifty thousand dollars for phase two. And since it is a prize, a monetary prize, there is no match. Any questions?
So it's something at phase two, it's, it's in accordance to how you managed phase one? So actually, you don't have to apply for the phase two. It's all in accordance to how you responded to phase one?
Exactly. So we will have to be very detailed in not only ensuring staff attend training, but the execution or implementation of those energy measures that are given to us in the training. You're exactly right.
That sounds like a good competition.
And as of last week, now twenty-five LEAs will be awarded. Last week, there were only about thirty-five, no, thirty-seven. I looked this more reading, and there are now forty-four teams, LEA teams, in this competition.
And when is the deadline?
It is due February twenty-eighth.
Okay, I think we need to go on your phone.
Well, we plan to have it even February twenty-first, I think.
And we were actually waiting on you all's approval. However, a lot of the work has already been done. We were hopeful the board would approve this endeavor, but a lot of, of the work has been done.
Is that right, Mr. Davis?
I move, I move that we approve this grant application, and good luck. Second.
Good luck.
We, we need this at the last meeting.
All in favor? Passes, is out of here, man. You with it, Governor? You with it, Governor? Okay, we got, uh, eight point seven.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thanks, she did.
Ms. Butler, I, I can pitch it for you with eight point seven in reference to the, the ones in property. You know, uh, we have the fifty thousand dollars for a feasibility study that's been granted to us. So along with, uh, uh, Ms. Butler and some of the people from Archival, we are working on trying to make sure we get a uh, select an architect first, we've met with them, and then given all the necessary paperwork and all, and Bruce has looked over it also. He said he don't feel probably with it.
This is for that, is, this is y'all for that feasibility study, right?
Yeah, and I spoke to Bruce about it, the superintendent, he said there were no limitations or restrictions or whatever.
That's the most important thing, we're not in any sort of agreement with it.
No, no, we're just gonna.
So we just have to approve steps, yeah.
Yeah, no worries, if they come back with a proposal, whatever, it's good as to come back to the board if they want to do something as a result of this study.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this in the way.
Okay, moving second all in favor? Okay, pass it five zero. Okay, eight point eight, Ms. Tillery?
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Mrs. McDonald Green. On behalf of the superintendent, the Office of Human Resources is presenting the Human Capital Strategic Plan Report. In January of twenty twenty-three, Superintendent Butcher received our district's personnel accreditation report from MBE, which included several non-compliant deficiencies on teachers that are not highly qualified and teachers working out of area of endorsement. These deficiencies have faced the district in a non-compliant status which may have led to being placed on probationary status twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. In order to keep the district's accreditation sta- status in good standing, MBE must allow the district to clear the deficiencies by submitting this corrective action plan. This plan must be board approved and signed by the board president and superintendent and submitted to MBE by May first, twenty twenty-three, in order to qualify for review. If we do not submit the board approved plan, the district will be cited for non-compliant status in our MBE accreditation record summary and will be placed on a probationary status. It is a request of the superintendent that the Nassau School Board Trustees approve this corrective action plan for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So the district will keep it tied in accreditation status. Are there any questions?
You go ahead. Okay, if there are any questions, can we get approved?
Yeah, I move that we approve a strategic plan of human capital and intention.
Can we get a seven?
Seven.
Okay, they're moving seven all the way. Pass it five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator's report, nine point one, thirty day review.
Nine point one, Mr. James, members of the board, desire formally review of board policies. This month, they are, there are three policies that with requested revisions. Policy E D A H deals with bus idling, uh, and idle reduction for buses. Uh, policy E F A deals with data breach prevention cybersecurity, and policy K M, uh, it covers visitors to our campus. We're also looking at sections E, F, K, L, and M with no requested revision. Those are the smaller sections of the board policy. Uh, on page two of that, it identifies those three policies with requested review, revisions, and the reason for those revisions.
Those are highlighted?
Yes.
Okay, there's no question, nine point two?
Well, that we approve nine point two.
You're going to.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Good after, good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Mrs. McDonald. Present fee, you have the January, that's the reports, that's the two. We have two million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and seven cent remaining. And that's the three, we have twenty-one million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and forty cent remaining. Are there any questions?
Let me add, what we plan to do is bring to you mainly the special reading from the regular March meeting about the additional funded funds that you asked us to look at the possibility of set aside. Then once we do that, then maybe we can do an RFP to go and start advertising for the, uh, for the application, you know? We are, we are working on that.
Okay.
Okay.
After night.
Nine point three, y'all board counting? Okay, anything need be added, take it, take it off, just secretary, no. Superintendent update, nine point four.
Say, two superintendent update, we also have a kind of a discussion here, we request that I'll tell you if we have any additions. We will say while we're in the process of passing that, we did meet with, uh, with Archives the other day in reference to what their plans are for the Jefferson, uh, for the Jefferson College site. And I think that for the most part, uh, Mr. Bull, in that meeting, you gave us the recent, I said, what we discussed in the meeting, please?
Uh, yes, sir.
What we're planning in, in career, uh, coaching, always present.
Yes, sir. Mr. James, members of the board, uh, we met with, uh, Mississippi Department of Archives and History on yesterday. Uh, they're asking on this plant, that lady came before some months ago. Uh, they're in the process of getting some, uh, federal dollars, uh, to renovate. Uh, first she started with the renovation that's currently going on at the Nassis Indian Village. And then she said that there was some additional monies, around twenty, thirty million, Mr. Butcher's somewhere in there.
Yeah, she said they have eight million in hands, but they need about twenty million to do a complete restoration.
Right, a, a complete restoration of Jefferson College, which is behind the, uh, Old Colan Village in Washington. And they want to, they will be coming back for the board to establish, uh, minimum understanding of the twenty in the school district, uh, and the archives. Uh, they want to partner with our construction program. Uh, they gave specifics, for example, they're, uh, doing some renovation work at Windsor Ruins currently. And how they, the contractors had to go through extensive training on how to actually renovate, uh, so that it can come onto the current, uh, archive standards. Uh, so there will be similar, uh, things going on at the, uh, Washington site, at the college site, as well as the Nassis Indian Village.
Did she name a number of students that she's interested in?
Well, basically, uh, we talked about how we like that over the course of the last decade. Uh, the state has kind of consolidated a lot of programs, for example. You know, it used to have, uh, brick masonry was a standalone program, Dr. Robson, remember that? You should have small engines, you should have electrical, you should have plumbing. But what they've done, they've combined and put all of that under the umbrella of construction, and they teach it in units, so you have a unit on, on plumbing, a unit on, uh, brick, brick masonry. You have a unit on electrical work. Whereas you really need extensive work, you know, Mr. Butcher brought up in the meeting. You know, it's kind of hard to find a good plumber these days. It's maybe two or three, and you better have your pocketbook ready when they come. So those are the types of, of jobs that they're gonna be needing, skilled labor. And they want to partner with our program, and it kind of fits into what we're getting ready to do with the academy models. So we're looking at making that under one academy umbrella, you know? Uh, bringing it into the district within the next, you know, year or two.
And so it would really be construction management?
Yes, it would be construction management, it would be, uh, particularly.
But they're, they're gonna do it with the emphasis on historic.
With historical preservation, yes, ma'am.
But I think the part I like about it is job share, so you can teach all you want to teach. There are some instances where you get out and that kid has to stand on, and that's gonna keep hands on, keep them interested for the most part.
Well, Jefferson College is such a beautiful setting, you know, it's a park-like setting with things for them to, you know, practice on.
The one other piece that we talked about, we talked about that, you know, Jefferson College will really be more like a the other one, like I said, a museum. And you're trying to stress to them, now, I don't know if we need to talk about slavery in that, but we need to talk about the free black inhabitants who owned, who built, because all these nice housing stuff around here, they would be about, about, uh, people, you know what I'm saying? It's tapping into the historical, the positive historical part, you know, kids at this damn time, they don't even know about slavery because they can't relate to that. In, in the basics, we can't even for the most part, but they want to hear about what happened, who did what, and those kind of things.
And you did stress that too.
Right, and I think that things might have brought up the possibility, maybe, when we look at our doing Mississippi history, you know, at eighth grade?
Yes.
Yeah, I think she stressed that idea. When we do Mississippi history in eighth grade, maybe we can have our own margin to talk about Nassis Adams County.
And craftsmen, I mean, you know, the, the beauty of the craftsmanship that we have here and that we all can share in that, in the pride of that, and, and trade.
It, it was, it was gonna be dangerous for my brother.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Also, on your, on your FYI, I want you to make a note on, uh, March the eleventh. Ms. uh, Morris, Ms. Morris, who's been responsible for our PTA organizations, all those kind of things, kind of like our, our parent liaison in the sky, so to speak. We want to do something special to honor our A C T students who made twenty-five plus, you know, we have banquet for everybody else. And it's not gonna be a very long drawn-out situation, we're trying to partner with, uh, you know, with one or two of the local businesses, we're gonna, you know, play our part too. And it's, it's a year down Saturday, so you don't have to go out pick the lunch, you know, your people get up at eleven o'clock, get on up and come over here, and you can eat lunch and enjoy it, the festivities, you know? Right. Uh, on April the fifteenth, Maryburg Purge is gonna bring two veins in so they can do health screening, especially, uh, mammograms for us, so ladies, you know? Uh, our mammal, our, uh, breast cancer rate in this particular area is quite high in comparison to some other states.
Now, you know, uh, males have breast cancer too.
I learned that about a month ago, I think, we mentioned that to me the other day.
Yes, I knew that.
I knew, I knew, I didn't know that, yeah, but.
I was just making mistakes.
Yeah, but we want to make sure we advertise this real, real good, because, you know, for the most part, unless you have a regular doctor, you might wait too much to get a male, male grant sometimes. You know, they're gonna bring you two veins, they, for the most part, you know, with Maryburg Purge, they can take the image and they'll, they'll have the radiologist to go on and take a look at it. You know, they need to have, you need to have further, uh, uh, referrals, and they're willing to, to do that. So I think it's something that we, cause, uh, Mr. Moore and I are gonna volunteer that day.
Yes, sir.
Behind, in front of the curtains.
And, and I will say, you know, that very often, you know, teachers are some of the ones that put that off, okay? I mean.
Cause we take, you know, take things out.
That's right, that's right, and so having it for a staff that works hard for kids is a good, good positive.
Okay, I received another, uh, letter from the class of nineteen seventy-three wanting to have their participating in the graduation, their goal in the graduation, so we have a graduation meeting set for Wednesday, is it Monday, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, let me have the graduation committee then bring back a recommendation to you, okay?
Okay.
I'm opposed to it beforehand, but.
Yeah, cause personally, I would, I would just say commencement is already long.
I don't think we need to rain on nobody else's parade.
I think we, we're supposed to be celebrating the students, the current students. I mean, they can have a reception or something, or, you know? But I'm gonna leave that to the committee, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Osobos, Thursday will be Saturday at, uh, the eighteenth, at Bethlehem Church.
The wake is on Friday at Marsh.
Yeah.
She, I guess she was a married.
They call her husband, Ayu, Ayu, Ayu?
Oh, that's who, I didn't know that.
You didn't know that?
I know Ayu, but I didn't know he was a, he was her husband.
Uh, also, then, you know, we, then thanks to all the weather, it was good for the last four or five days, so they have started setting the, uh, the foundation for the parking lots and all at the new high school, they're about halfway, putting the dim slow down and those kind of things, so we are still making little progress, slowly steady progress. That's all I have any questions.
Okay.
Now, let me ask a question. Uh, for the AEDs, is there some kind of grant?
I don't know, we're gonna look at the possibility, maybe, like, maybe going to the Kewon, the, the only one that we have right now, the Kewonas gave it to us, now that they're ready, so, you know? It's about doing this thing, you know, they're, they're a little bit of small or something now, you know, but I think that's something that we need. Uh, because in fact, I think we need to have one of these schools, probably have four, at least four, so we can distribute among the, you know, doing the athletic, uh, uh, programs and all, because of the fact that. Uh, and I think they're not just, I just think we got to have some intensive training how to use it.
Right, because, uh, we, we had some donated to us, uh, maybe two, three years ago, with the training.
Okay, but who, who donated?
It was very processing time.
Okay.
The other funds could be used for that, I think the other funds could be used for that.
I don't know, I don't get why that, that was Thomas, but I think that, you know, what the plan is right now is to go to some of the businesses, especially the banks and all. And, uh, like the Kewonas Club and some of the other clubs, see if they would donate one or two, you know, that kind of thing.
I'm maybe near a hospital, yeah.
There's currently a bill in the senate, uh, to do that, to provide funding for AEDs, um, through the, um, Mississippi Department of Health. So hopefully that bill passes.
So that's some of our problems.
Look, call your friends and tell them.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's all I have, also, please look at the list here, this is our, our art department will have a performance on the, uh.
Said it on Sunday.
On, uh, February twenty-sixth, at five thirty.
At the Little Theater.
Yes, and I think it'll be a good time, if we can kind of talk this up, so we'll have, give you a good representation there, you know?
Absolutely.
The school board come in?
Yeah. Uh, yesterday, I was reappointed to the board by the ma, the city of Nassis mayor and board of aldermen. And the amount, the amount, the amount of support that I received was overwhelming and totally awesome. So there are some people, even though I called them personally yesterday, to thank them for their support and help. I would like to recognize them publicly. First of all, I thank God, who, without him, this would not have been possible. My family, for their continued support and unwavering, uh, love. Representative Robert Johnson, uh, the city of Nassis, Mayor Dan, uh, Gibson, Alderman Sarah Carter Smith, Alderman Dan Dill. But special, special thanks go out to Alderman Billy Joe Frazier, Alderman Felicia Bridgewater Irving, and Alderman Benjamin Davis. Ms. Joyce Alson O'Mathus, and Ms. Sherri DeFrasier. The Nassis Adams School Board members, Mr. Philip West and Mr. Amos James. Nassis Adams School, uh, School Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Fred Butcher, and Ms. Sandra McDonald Green. Ms. Thel Minusa, she came and she sit right beside me. And I told her that God has sent her as my comforter. Uh, all NASD teachers and staff that supported me or helped me on this journey, NAACP members, and all members in the community for the support during this reappointment. I want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart, because all of you played a role in me being reappointed to the Nassis Adams School District. Thank you all very much.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
No, sir.
Dr. Brun?
No comment.
Ms. Webb?
On tomorrow, uh, my office will be presenting American Reckoning, the documentary of the nineteen sixty-seven killing of NAACP Warren Jackson Senior. And, um, after the showing of the documentary, I will. And, um, after the showing of the documentary, I will have our very own Denise Ford, Denise Jackson Ford, who was his daughter, or who was, who was his daughter, and she will be doing a Q and A session. So if you, uh, would like to join us, please do. It will be via Zoom, uh, just reach out to me, and I will send you the link. And plus, I posted it on my Facebook page, so if you know you want to go out there and get the link, please do so. That's tomorrow at one o'clock.
It's gonna be all by Zoom?
It's gonna be all by Zoom.
This is not the one that came on PBS?
This was on PBS.
I got it recorded.
Yeah, but you know, a lot of, a lot of us did not see it.
It probably cut a lot out.
It might have been the dude, it couldn't have, it was the deep in the deep.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I got it recorded.
But, uh, I, I do, I do have the, uh, I'm not gonna actually show the entire documentary, because it was an hour and twenty-three minutes long. But I do have the breakdown of the most important facts, so that's what I will show.
Okay. So, that's it? Do we have anything for?
Is that, do we have anything for executive session?
I think. Anything?
Okay, well, I'll motion that we have a closed determination as to, as to whether we need to.
It's been moved in seven all in favor? Now, we have closed the termination, thank you.
How often do we go into executive session? I assume this.
Thank y'all for coming.